I've seen it, but I haven't.
I didn't go to that.
I went to one.
Oh, was it MS one? What is your, uh, your next referendum?
I have no idea.
One, one I.
Oh, we've done it both ways. We've done it both ways. Yeah. Well, the only reason we did it both ways, she runs presentation. Now, we can stop. Before we can stop. Well, we can do it. Doesn't matter. I'm just because it's there, we can find, alright, let's talk to Carol first.
It's what I, it's what I said last time.
Yeah, that's what you did last time. Yeah.
They'll be here, we've got a two o'clock meeting that same day.
Oh, that's the end. They'll be there. Bring their suggestions to. Rick is still here. Still going to thank for the commission. Spiritual religious.
Born the day after, and my mother always did one cake for all of us. All of our birthdays at the same time.
Mark, are you ready? I now call to order the regular session meeting of the Board of Commissions of the City of Tarpon Springs on Tuesday, August first, two thousand seventeen, at six thirty P M. Roll call, please.
Mayor LaHuzis.
Here.
Vice Mayor Banther.
Here.
Commissioner Seber.
Here.
Commissioner Kikta.
Here.
Commissioner Carr.
Here.
Tonight's invocation will be given by Reverend Dave, uh, Farkinson. Uh, if you please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Should we say the pledge first?
No, no, the, uh, the prayer.
Let us pray. Dear Heavenly Father, we ask you that you provide us with wisdom this evening, that the decisions made on behalf of the citizens of Tarpon Springs would be pleasing in your sight. We ask that you would guide and direct us tonight as we once again come together on behalf of the families within our community. May we always remember that wisdom does come from above. May decisions made by our city leaders this evening bring peace and strength and tranquility within our community. We also want to remember the vulnerable and the less fortunate among us, and ask that you would provide protection for those that protect us throughout our city, our state, and the world. Bless all those who serve our fair city and bless tonight's meeting along with all who are in attendance. For we pray in the name of the Father, and of the Son, and of the Holy Spirit. Amen.
Pledge of Allegiance is a flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our commission meeting. And now we will go to the public comments of the items that will not be discussed this evening. If you have any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record. Here none, we go to the item number one, which is a presentation, annual updating of the local mitigation strategy. Ready to go.
Good evening. This is essentially, it's gonna be a very quick presentation. Essentially, what this is, is this is our annual update to our local mitigation strategy. The last two years, this is the second year that we've done this, we've actually gone through as a, at the county level, along with our county partners and the other cities, and updated the local mitigation strategy, all the appendices, all the projects that have already been completed, and projects that are now being proposed and moving through the process. Essentially, what the LMS is, it's a blueprint for our community to help guide and unify our course of action to mitigate and eliminate and reduce imminent, imminent threats from disasters that would threaten Pinellas County. Things that are covered in it are flooding issues, both local and countywide flooding issues, as well as storms and those type of things, and the potential of damage for those storms. So essentially, we have now proposed all of the updates that we have, and that's been accepted at the state level. So this is just letting you know that that, that information is available. It's now currently on our website. The county will actually be hearing this update package as well on the fifteenth. And all that we just need you to do is kind of accept that you recognize that we acknowledge that we have completed that piece, and that we are providing this information to both the county folks and also to folks here in Tarpon Springs via our website. It's also available in my office if anybody has any questions. So I can answer any questions that the board may have.
I just wanna thank you for the presentation, and thank you for representing the city to the mitigation working group. Any commission comments? Here none. Are there any, uh, public comments on this item? Here none, thank you very much. We're now going to the, uh, consent agenda. Item number two is a satisfaction release of lease. Number three is authorize extension of fire protection services agreement. Number four is bid number seventeen zero zero sixty-three dash B R S reject all bids furnished and install one aluminum canopy for Dixie Highway lift station. Number five, award bid number seventeen zero one fourteen dash B, that C M tree removal and related services. Number six is review file number fifteen zero zero thirty-eight, C C M concrete patch, mixed materials and services, and number seven is approved file number seventeen zero one fifty-seven dash and that's C M single source purchase of Aqua-Tec original equipment manufacturer and parts repaired and services. Any items that you'd like to pull to discuss? Here none, thank you. Any, uh, no commission comments? Any public comments on this item? Here none, roll call, please. Oh, excuse me, I need a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
And now roll call.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. We're now going to the special consent agenda, which is item number eight, request to settle administrative fine of or lien for fourteen zero two Castle Work Lane. The seat attorney will present this item.
Thank you, Mayor Commissioners. You all have received my written report on this request to settle an administrative fine or lien concerning the property of fourteen oh two Castle Works Lane. We have liens totaling about a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars dating back to code violations in two thousand nine and two thousand thirteen. Property had a foreclosure completed in two thousand fourteen. The violator is not the requestor. Again, we've seen many of these. I have recommended, um, a settlement in the amount of four thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents. Included within these liens are a six hundred and thirty-eight dollar and seventy-two cent, uh, non-negotiable utility lien. So that, that part of it is, um, however much you decide to settle this for, that six thirty-eight seventy-two gets, needs to get paid first. Again, that's my recommendation, four thousand two thirteen seventy-two. The amount offered by the present owner of the mortgage company is the administrative costs of five seventy-five. You heard my recommendation, I'm happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you.
And also, incidentally, we do have a representative of the mortgage company or the present owner with us tonight, which is somewhat unusual.
Are there any commission comments?
I've, sorry, I could go first.
I was just gonna make a recommendation that we, um, get the six hundred and thirty-eight seventy-two for the utility that we need to have, and the five seventy-five administrative costs, which would be twelve thirteen seventy-two.
I'm coming from a different standpoint, I think we should look at, as a board, I know we've talked about guidelines in the past, this has been one heck of a nuisance property for many, many years, and that the residents have had to deal with, so we're having a hundred and almost forty thousand dollars of lien put against it. So if we come up with some type of equation of ten percent or five percent or something along those lines, I think this would be, this has been a nuisance property for quite some time for the city of Tarpon Springs. So for just looking at the, the minimum, I think we really need to evaluate this, um, as a whole. Yes, it's back in compliance right now, but, um, it, my understanding is it's not a individual, it's a company, right? It's a mortgage holder. So, um, yeah, I think a hundred and forty thousand is a bit obsessive of a lien, but I think at the same time, if we look at a percentage of a ten percent or a five percent, that's something I would make a suggestion as.
Thank you. I, uh, I support the recommendation of the city attorney to receive the three thousand dollars plus the, uh, the cost of five hundred and seventy-five, total of three thousand five hundred and seventy-five dollars. Has been reviewed by the, our seat attorney very carefully, so I will accept his recommendation. But we have three different.
Mayor?
Yes.
And I think you would include in that plus the six thirty-eight seventy-two for the, so the total, yes, I agree, and I think that, um, lean towards what Commissioner Carr was discussing, it might not, that's not that, that's not quite five or ten percent, but I think for this particular property, um, I, I think four thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents to, to, to settle is very fair.
Okay. Commissioner Kikta, you have any comments on that?
I'd like to make a motion, if I may.
Go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion to, um, accept the attorney's recommendation of four thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars and seventy-two cents.
To clarify the motion, the full recommendation is that some be paid within sixty days, or the fine reverts to its original amount?
Yes, exactly.
Thank you.
And I would like to go to the, uh, public comments. If you, uh, have any comments, please come forward, state your name and your address for the record, you've been given four minutes. To the podium.
Roberta Cone, attorney for Fannie Mae. I don't have any comments, I am here, though, if anyone had any questions. We approve of the recommendation.
Thank you. Any other comments? We do have a motion on the floor. Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Commissioner Carr?
Uh, no.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. Thank you. We are now going to the item number nine, resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-six, application seventeen fifty-six, condition use for school of general education, uh, at the four thirty-one East Spruce Street, industrial restricted district. This is a quasi-traditional. The city attorney will read the title and will explain the quasi-traditional process.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Before I read the quasi-judicial process this evening, I will note that, uh, items nine, ten, and eleven on tonight's agenda are quasi-judicial, so if you hear for any of those items, I'll read the announcement once, and then we'll do the swearing-in at once, and then we'll move on to the, to the items. A quasi-judicial proceeding is one where the commission acts in a quasi-judicial rather than a legislative capacity. At such a hearing, it is not the commission's function to make law, but rather to apply law that has already been established. In a quasi-judicial hearing, the commission is required by law to make findings of fact based upon the evidence presented, and apply those findings to previously established criteria contained within the city's code in order to make a legal decision regarding the application. The commission may only consider evidence at that hearing that the law considers competent, substantial, and relevant to the issues. If that evidence demonstrates that the applicant has met the criteria established in the code, then the commission is required by law to find in favor of the applicant. By the same token, if the competent, substantial, and relevant evidence demonstrates that the applicant has failed to meet the criteria, then the commission is required to find against the applicant. All witnesses must give their testimony under oath. All persons testifying must give their name and address for the record. All testimony and questioning must address matters that are relevant and material to the issues under consideration. City staff will present its testimony and evidence first. The applicant will then present its testimony to witnesses. Members of the public opposing the application will then be given an opportunity to present testimony. After all members of the public speaking in opposition have concluded, members of the public in support of the application will have an opportunity to present testimony. Each member of the public is limited to four minutes. The applicant will then have an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary, after which city staff will be given an opportunity to make a closing argument or summary. Following this, the commission will consider the matter. Commissioners may ask questions of witnesses. A motion will be made and a vote will be taken. At this time, I would ask, uh, commission to disclose any ex parte communications on any of the three, uh, items nine, ten, or eleven on tonight's agenda. Seeing none, I would ask those who intend to give testimony tonight on any of these applications to please stand and raise your right hand and be sworn. Do you swear or affirm that the testimony you're about to give in this proceeding is the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Item number nine is resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-six. A resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida approving application number seventeen dash fifty-six, requesting a conditional use permit to allow a school of general education on the property located at four three one East Spruce Street in the industrial restricted zoning district, I R, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. It's resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-six by title only. Heather?
Thank you. This property was recently acquired by West Coast World Church, Inc., and it was formally used as an adult daycare facility. They are looking to, um, actually start a school of general education, and with that, um, they're asking for this building to actually be converted into a private school. It's an existing building. Most of the improvements will actually be inside the building, it will not actually be out, outed about. There is an existing parking area that is adequate to serve there, there is an additional recreational area that they're proposing in the rear. There is ample property between this property and their adjacent property to have both the schools, the church, and multiple other, um, uses on that property. So with that, staff has concluded that this meets all of the criteria of the, um, conditional use, and it is consistent with the land development code. We have already provided services to there, so they're not going to be extending any additional services to the, the school at this time. So as a result, staff is recommending approval of resolution two thousand seventeen twenty-six with the following conditions. The property to be used as a school of general education. All other uses are subject to further review and subsequent approval consistent with the land development code, and the condition, the conditional use will expire within one year of approval if a building permit is not issued for the property. The planning and zoning board saw this application on July seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. There was some limited discussion. There was some participation for, uh, folks in the audience who wanted to just find out what was actually going on on that property. They didn't have any opposition, they just were asking questions. As a result, uh, the planning board also approved this application with the conditions, uh, as outlined above by staff. With that, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Seeing none, does the applicant wish to present to the commission this evening? Are there any questions for the applicant from commission? Any closing summary, statement, anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in support or in opposition to the application? Seeing none.
Thank you. Are there any, uh, commission comments? I'd just like to say that this building is, be used as a, as a private school is appropriate. The Tarpon Springs Elementary is right across the street, and it's appropriate for that to be a private school, and thank you for doing that. Chair wants to take a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. We are now going to the item number ten, which is resolution two thousand seventeen dash twenty-seven. The application seventeen sixty-two, condition use for commercial recreation facility at the four twenty-five East Spruce Street, industrial restricted district. This is also quasi-traditional.
Resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, approving application number seventeen dash sixty-two, requesting a conditional use permit to allow a portion of the building to be used as a commercial recreation facility on the property located at four twenty-five East Spruce Street in the industrial restricted zoning district, I R, providing for findings, providing for conditions, and providing for an effective date. It's resolution twenty seventeen dash twenty-seven by title only.
Thank you. Basically, this is an existing structure, again, it's adjacent to the school and the church, and, um, it's currently being used actually for this use. They moved in, and as a result of that, they'll have to receive after-the-fact permits for any improvements that they didn't actually get a permit for. But this is trying to rectify a situation where this is an industrial restrictive, it's a, um, commercial recreational facility, it's consistent with the criteria of the conditional use. However, conditional use has, it's fallen in and out of this category a couple of times, so as a result, staff went through, but last year, and actually updated this regulation to provide for this use in this I R district. So as a result, it's consistent with all of the land development code criteria. They've met all of the conditions that they need for the outside. They have enough parking, they have sufficient handicap parking, there's limited, um, use of the outside area, you know, there's running and those types of things that are done out there. It's very limited in what's done outside. As a result, there are no, um, additional compatibility issues. It should not affect any additional properties since it's been existing use in, in this property for some time. And as a result, staff is recommending approval of resolution two thousand seventeen twenty-seven with the following conditions. The property is to be used as a commercial recreation facility, all others, all of the uses are subject to further review and subsequent approval consistent with the land development code, and the conditional use will expire within one year of approval if a building permit is not issued for the property. Again, the planning and zoning board saw this application on July seventeenth, two thousand seventeen. The board had some limited discussion, um, and recommended approval of the application with the two conditions as I outlined it above. I can answer any questions that you may have.
Questions?
I didn't have a question, I just had a statement because I knew that this place existed already, so I was a little confused when I saw that they were just applying, driven by their unseen activities, so.
Yeah, this is trying to get them, with, rather than having them go through the code enforcement processes, actually, they're ready to comply, they wanna be compliant, so they're coming through the process, the formal process that they should have been able to go through originally when they set up.
Right.
Is the applicant present tonight, Heather? Oh, there you go. Do you wish to make any, uh? Any questions for the applicant?
No.
Seeing none, appreciate that, just so the record reflects the applicant is present on both applications. Are there any members of the public wishing to speak in opposition to the application? In support? Closing?
Not at this time.
And moving on.
Okay, thank you. Are there any commission comments?
I, I just, I'm sorry, I did have one, this is the same, um, building where Image Media is located, correct? Okay, I just want. CrossFit. The CrossFit, that's right, okay. All right, thank you.
You can go later, work out.
Yeah, see, I need a new gym, so, okay.
Well, they've been there for a while.
Is it?
Yeah. Uh, thank you. Chair wants to take a motion?
A motion to approve.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther?
Yes.
Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. We're now going to the item number eleven, which is the ordinance two thousand seventeen dash twenty-three, the application seventeen sixty-one vacating and abandoning utility and drainage easement at the nine thirty-three Lean Harbor Court. This is a second reading, and it's a quasi-traditional.
Ordinance number twenty seventeen dash twenty-three, in the ordinance of the City of Tarpon Springs, Florida, vacating and abandoning one hundred and forty-four square feet of the center, one-third of the ten-foot wide utility and drainage easement, located along the rear property line of nine three three Lean Harbor Court, lot one fifty-two, Brittany Park, Phase One A subdivision, providing for conditions, providing for findings, providing for future easements, providing for recordation of the public records of Pinellas County, and providing an effective date. Second reading of ordinance twenty seventeen dash twenty-three by title only, was published in the Tampa Bay Times by title only, with a map on July fourteen, twenty seventeen, and July twenty-one, twenty seventeen. On first reading, we did hold a full quasi-judicial hearing, so I would ask for staff and applicant, uh, merely tonight to update the commission on any changed circumstances and answer any questions that they may have.
There have no, been, been no changes on, based from last night, last time's hearing, so as a result, um, I can answer any questions that you might have.
Questions? Anybody? Are members of the public wishing to speak in opposition? In support? Mr. Mayor, may I take a motion?
Are there any commission comments on this item? I will entertain a motion?
Motion approved.
Second.
Second.
And roll call, please.
Commissioner Carr?
Yes.
Commissioner Kikta?
Yes.
Commissioner Seber?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Banther? Mayor LaHuzis?
Yes. Well, that concludes the agenda tonight. We're going to the staff comments? Chief?
Thanks, Mayor, no comments.
No comments.
Board?
Just Thursday night, we have our budget work session. Um, we've got all the materials, the presentations we're gonna give, so if you have any questions between now and that meeting, I anticipate us to be able to get it over in the one night. I know there's an alternate date for the tenth, but, um, we're still down, and I think we've got a good budget to give to you, so I think we'll be able to do it Thursday night.
Thank you. Madam City Clerk? Now, Commissioner Kikta?
No comments.
Vice Mayor Ban? Come on, yeah.
You want me to talk about?
Yeah, sure.
So, um, you know, we've talked about the, uh, we've had the sister city trip where they came here in January, and the mayor just returned from Greece, obviously, on, at his own, at, at his own expense up there. And, um, he came back with an invitation, a formal one, correct, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
For us to, um, for us to go over there, um, I believe in Holy Week, correct? Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, Orthodox Holy Week?
And, and I think it's April the eighth.
April, yeah, so we'll, we'll get, we'll get the dates firm, but, uh, the mayor asked, um, if, you know, obviously, he's, um, working with the sister city group here and over in, in Columnosa, Hawkeye, and there's one, uh, one other one, which is it, a city, uh, medical?
See me, see me.
See me? Okay. He's, he's working with the ones o- o- over there, and he asked that I, um, work with us and Trish to see what the interest is in us going, uh, o- o- over there, obviously. For the elected officials, we go at our own expense, and, um, once we get there, I think a majority of our costs are covered by the, by the sister city groups, correct, Mayor?
Uh, I, I'm not sure about going to cover that, but.
Okay, well, some are.
That we're gonna cover our own.
Yeah, we're gonna cover our, our own expenses, there won't be any taxpayer money funding, um, for the commissioners to go, but I, I do think it would be prudent, um, to have some staff go with us for reasons of, uh, just, uh, um, you know, having what's happening recorded, and, um, just assistance over there. I know our city manager doesn't like to fly past Nashville, and what he told me, so.
Or New Orleans.
New Orleans, so he told me he's already, he's already out of the equation, but, uh, yeah, I, I think it would be, I think it would be wise to bring both the city clerk and the deputies, uh, and, and, and the deputy city clerk with us. Um, obviously, I would not ask that, they pay for, for themselves, because they would be going in a, in a work capacity. So we'll have to discuss down the road, um, you know, do we, do we have budget money for that? Do we, do we raise that money? That wouldn't be, you know, that, that expensive for them to do that. So, um, again, I think just start talking to your spouses and, um, and let Trish know what your interest is, and then, you know, we'll, we'll start making plans down the road, and hopefully, we can get a group together to, um, go over there and, um, get to experience, uh, the different things that, um, influence our, our culture here and commerce and whatnot, so, but I wanna thank the mayor for, uh, laying the groundwork for that. That's all I got right now, but let Trish know, I would say probably by the end of the month, what, what your interest is, and then, um, once we have a number, then we can, um, I think, if everyone's in agreement, obviously, um, coordinate this through the city clerk's office as far as, um, where we'll get the best deal on travel and whatnot. And again, just, just, just to reiterate, this will all be at, uh, our own personal expense.
Mm-hmm, thank you. And, and I'd like to ask, our seat attorney is, any, uh, uh, is that okay with the sunshine and love to do that?
She's not in the spot at all. Yeah, I mean, y'all can travel together, the same admonitions that apply in the states apply on the, on the airplane and in Greece, right? You can't discuss issues that are going to come before you for discussion and vote outside of a publicly known and recorded public meeting.
Sure.
You know, bear in mind, I wanna caution you that, um, that there, there may be some sentiment that y'all are gonna be flying on a plane presumably together across the ocean, and, oh, you're gonna stop yourselves from doing that. But that's, that's the law that governs you.
Sure.
I'm heavily sedated on transatlantic. I won't be, uh, discussing city business on that plane. I won't be, uh, discussing city business on that plane.
And what we do ahead of time, um, I believe, because American Easter, I think, is the first, isn't it, the first and the eighth? So what we would do, all, all, only obligations, have two meetings a month, so probably what we do, we have plenty of times ahead of time for Heather planning, everybody to advertise, we would do our meetings that month, the last two Tuesdays of the month. That would give, because you got to, you got to be, you're going to be going between American Easter and, and Greek Easter, so what we do, we have plenty of time to notice and everything, we do our commission meetings the last two Tuesdays of the month, and that meets all the requirements and stuff of the law, so we could easily accommodate that and, and, uh, for that trip.
I, I'll take it that, uh, city manager's not interested to go.
I tried, you know?
You need somebody to stay behind and hold down the fort, so I reluctantly, uh, take that duty on.
Thank you. Commission clerk.
Um, just a couple of comments. I wasn't at the last meeting, I was out of town. Was there an update given about the bayou motels at all?
No, but I'll have one at the next commission meeting for you.
Okay. And then I also met with, uh, Commissioner, uh, County Commissioner Pat Gerard. She met me here about, uh, in Tarpon Springs about two and a half weeks ago, and, uh, I gave her a tour of Tarpon Springs, and, uh, showed her all the roads that the county's responsible for, and, uh, addressed a lot of the issues from lack of sidewalks to, uh, potholes, to, uh, no shoulders on multiple roads where we have, uh, road bicyclists, and then, um, some of the projects that the city's looking at as well along the bayou areas. Um, and then also, uh, Woodcombe Bayou as, uh, being a potential area where we've actually, um, taken Ga, uh, Woodcombe Road and the bayou itself, because there needs to be, uh, some areas addressed along there too, so. And I'm also meeting with, um, Commissioner Eggers here pretty soon, so, uh, hopefully, we'll have something positive coming out of the commission, uh, from the county side. And then I know we're looking forward to having a, a joint meeting amongst the boards, um, sometime in October, I believe that was, Mark, when we're trying to set up a time.
Look, October, November, yeah. Four holidays.
I had another question too, uh, I brought it up to, um, Deputy Chief, uh, Young earlier about the flagpole, um, cell phone tower at Station Seventy. It hasn't had a flag in quite some time, and I'm not sure who we need to talk to, to coordinate. But I think that it's a pretty neat sight when you come over, um, the Martin Luther King Bridge, at Woodcombe Bayou, and you look across the bayou, and you see the church in the bayou with the cross, and then you also see the flag in the background. It's a pretty neat, um, thing to see in a community like Tarpon Springs. Uh, and not having that flag up now for quite some time, I, I think it's something, a part of Tarpon that we're missing.
We can contact, yeah, we can contact them, yeah.
Thanks.
Isn't that the flag that, uh, I had brought up that was going to be replaced? Mark? That same flag? Okay.
I forgot something there. Well, Commissioner Seber, you go first.
Okay, all I had to do is, uh, remind everyone we have Hippie Fest coming up on the twelfth, uh, from two to ten, with the Black Honkies playing from six to ten on the Sponge Docks, and it's a sixth annual Hippie Fest, and dress up as a hippie and come on out. It's going to be a lot of fun.
It is every.
Bula hoop contest, costume contest, kids, families, come out there on the twelfth.
Good. Vice Mayor Banther, you have some more?
Yeah, sorry, I got so caught up with the trip to Greece, I forgot my. I'd like to thank Commissioner Carr for his work with the county commissioner. I had heard rumors that he was driving around a county commissioner, and, um, I'm not sure I could get in the car with some of them. But, uh, I, I'm, I'm especially proud that he got Pat Gerard up here, um, I know that, um, you know, she's not, she's not been up here a lot, so I think that's impressive that you got her up here, I'm very happy that you went and showed her the roads and everything, because she is our at-large commissioner, her and Dave Eggers, and, um, what's the one that helps with the dredge? Her name's escaping me. Yes, Janet Long, those are our representatives that are specific for Tarpon Springs. So it's important that, um, we maintain a good relationship with them, so I, I, I thank Commissioner Carr for doing that. Uh, second off, I meant to say thank you to Gus Villaracus, who wrote a very enthusiastic letter, as we all saw, support the grant that we're trying for round two with state funding for the dredge, uh, sorry, for the, for the spoil site, for the dredge. It's, it's, it's really crucial that we get the money for this, we don't dry up our other capital fund. And, um, I, 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 you know, I, if, if this does not work with the, with the state, you know, and that there's something else, else, else going on, because we got all letters from all of our, all of our representatives, and I know that, I talked to Liz Hito's in Gus's office, and Gus even spoke to a, a representative in Pasco about how the dredge, you know, will improve the flooding situation for Pasco County and, and, and the, and the Anclot River. And, uh, that representative is apparently close, close, close with the governor. So, uh, he, he spoke to her as well, so I, I just want to thank him and his office for their quick, very quick response for that.
Thank you. Mr. Licorice, you want to give us an update about the, uh, requesting funds from, uh, what was just admitted to the, to the state?
Yes, well, um, Bob Robertson got right on, as soon as, you know, we were waiting, we had the word, I think, everywhere in Tallahassee, as soon as the paperwork came out to get in touch with us, to submit, we were real happy when we started to submit, you never know on a state grant or state money, you never know what conditions they're going to have on them, if there's going to be conditions that are advantageous to you or hurt you. It was pretty much all advantageous, I mean, our, our project speaks for itself. But again, sometimes in the criteria, you can get yourself moved out, but, um, the criteria was right there, um, that we met Bob Robertson in record time, even before he got back, Mayor, um, got it done, we got it submitted, we send copies to who we needed to get. So I'm, I'm very optimistic, um, that we were able to meet all the criterias, um, you know, I'm very confident that we can put ourselves up against anybody else who submits, and that we will get that money. So I'm very confident, and we're just waiting to see what the process is now, we don't know exactly what the, what the process is. We're going to be making the call next week to try to get a little fur, further ideas, are going before a committee, how, how they're going to look and judge these things, so as soon as we get that information, we'll let everybody know and, uh, and be ready for whatever we need to do to ensure that we get that.
Thank you, Mr. Licorice, I'm planning to give him a call Monday, to follow up with that. It's great news.
Can we apply for anything else?
Huh?
Can we apply for anything else with that fund? I mean, is there any other projects in Tarpon Springs that we could, uh, look at, uh?
Don't know with that criteria, but we can look.
Yeah. Well, I got some announcements to make, uh. Thursday, August, uh, August third, we have the Sunset Beach concert, and that begins at seven P M. Friday, August fourth, we have the First Friday, that starts at six P M on Tarpon Avenue. August fifth, we have the Night in the Islands, that begins at six P M till eleven thirty P M at the Sponge Dog. And I know, uh, Commissioner Seber will be working very hard out there. Also like to encourage everyone to attend the, um, the workshop that we're going to have August third at six thirty P M to, uh, observe the, uh, budget process. And, uh, we will be discussing the projects that we're going to be have for next year, two thousand eighteen, also the forecast for the next five years. In addition to that, I'd like to, uh, encourage everyone to attend the public hearings that we're going to have September sixth and September nineteenth, and if you please come to provide us with your, uh, input. And, um, as you'll, it, it was just discussed that I've returned from, uh, a trip from our sister cities, Hocky and Columnos. The, uh, the trip was very productive. I, um, I have constructive discussions and agreements with the mayors of both cities of, uh, Hocky and Columnos to enhance our sister city programs to, in regards to exchange culture, education, and economic development. And, uh, uh, they're looking forward to see us there in, in April. So, uh, also like to, uh, welcome our new businesses to Tarpon Springs, Coal Link Foundation, Lean More Events and Design, and Three Coconuts down at the Sponge Docks. Well, that concludes our regular station meeting, and it's adjourned at seven oh seven. And thank you for being here tonight, and good luck to you. Yeah.
Well, exactly the same time as the last one.
Exactly the same time, I thought it was a record.
No, we were almost about the same time.
Thank you. Oh, okay.
I was just telling her I, I go there. Yeah, we're mem, we're members there. Yeah, so, I was just saying. I never thought I'd. And it's a great place, and, yeah, I thought was.
Yeah.